To call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings everyone and welcome to the city council meeting on July 23rd. Summer's getting away from us here. We shall have a roll call, please Stacy.
Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Savi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellisson?
Yes.
Mayor Walde?
Yes. Well, once again, we shall start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This one comes to us from Tony Blair. For those of you who don't know who he is, or was, or is, I guess he's still alive. He was the former Prime Minister of the United Kingdom from 1997 to 2007. So for 10 years. Goes like this. "Sometimes it's better to lose and do the right thing than to win and do the wrong thing." Okay. We shall move on to our approval of tonight's agenda. If there's any additions or corrections, now would be the time. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move on to motion to approve the council minutes as listed.
I'll second.
It's for the agenda, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, we have citizens' comments portion of the meeting. And this is where we allow members of the community to come and approach the council. So Jim, this is your time. If you'd like to come up and talk to the council, please stand up to the microphone and state your name, please. Because this meeting is recorded, so that way everybody in the audience or the...
Talking to this thing?
Yeah.
Yep.
My name is Jim Riley. I bought some property over on 24 Skyview. And I wanted to build a shed. So I looked up in, what are they called?
Convenance.
Convenance. And it said that you could build a shed, but it didn't quite quote what size. So I just took it for granted that I could build a shed. So I proceeded to build one and I did not get a permit. Well, a gentleman came up there, or three days ago, and stopped me. He said I could not build because I had to get a permit for number one. And then I'm a little bit on the city property. When I bought the place, there was a fence line running down the side there. And I was kind of told that that was the property line. And it turned out that it wasn't the property line. And my neighbor, of course, the fence line comes down through hers and through mine. And I just took it for granted that that was the line. That could be the line, you know. No, it wasn't. So, I would like to purchase some property from the city. About 25 feet along that. It's a... Next door is a park. And I would just, I would like to purchase about, I think it's about 25 feet.
25 feet out and then the length of your property is that we're talking at 25?
Right, right. 25. 25 feet to the, if you're facing it, to the left of the property.
Sure, to the east?
Yeah, towards the park. The park is the neighbor there.
To the east, yep.
And I would like to, you know, purchase some of that land. Not very much. All the further I'm going out is basically to where the white fence is, maybe a little bit further. The white fence is not on my property, by the way. It's on the neighbor's.
Okay.
But I just, I thought that was the line, but it turned out it's not the line. And it's considerably less. And right now I have a garage half-built and I can't go any further until I get something resolved.
Okay.
And with the 25 feet, that'll give you some setback from the 25 foot to the edge of where your property?
It will give me the, I have to have a 15-foot setback and that will...
That will give you the 15-foot if you get 25 feet to the edge of the construction that you have?
It'll probably be a little bit more, but we measured it out and decided we should probably go with 25 feet rather than 20. 20 would probably do it, but 25 would be more efficient.
Okay. Typically how citizens' comment portions of our meetings work, we probably won't take immediate action on it tonight, Jim.
Okay.
But you coming here puts it before the council now and then we'll take it under consideration. And then we may have to consult with the planning commission. I don't know if that has to go back to them or not. I'm sorry?
Not for selling of land.
Not for selling? Okay. I was just wondering if it had anything to do with the...
Did you have an approximate dollar value that you figured this property is worth? Or what you feel is a fair for the property that you're looking for?
Make around $20,000. That's the high end.
I like how you started high. I like your...
That, that, you know, it's a lot of money, but it's something that could be helpful to me and maybe helpful to the city.
And when you get this building completed, it's going to blend in and match the rest of your property there?
Definitely.
So it's...
Definitely.
Okay, I guess that would be one of the main issues?
It's going to be steel siding and steelrope. So it's going to match in, and we will match the colors to the building we have now. We're probably approximately two and a half, three feet away from the garages we have now.
Good. Thanks for coming, Jim. Well, definitely we'll have to probably go to a different session sometime to come up with something here.
We can do just like we did probably the last time we talked about this. Any other questions for Jim from the council? I appreciate you coming in, Jim.
Thank you.
See what we can do for you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight we have two public hearings. Before we tear into those, I wanted to ask, did we receive any written communications from anybody regarding either one of these two? Because that is an option for people. If they cannot be physically here, they can send in a written communication? No? Okay. That's good. Well, as we all know, ordinances are introduced, which is the first reading. And they are adopted in the second reading. And both of these here that we have tonight are second readings. So what we'll do is I will open and close each of them independently. And then we'll have a little discussion and then we'll close the public hearing on each one. And then we'll have, we'll take action on it in form of a motion. So the first one that we will consider is second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 124. But first of all, I will open the public hearing. I suppose I should do that before we get too far here. And that's an ordinance vacating a portion of the utility easement in block seven of the original platte. And they call these things public hearings for a reason. It's, gives the public an opportunity to speak and we as a council, we get to listen. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this ordinance, vacating that utility easement, now is the time to come up and speak. And then we will listen. Seeing none. I shall then close the first public hearing. And then I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion or final comments and then we'll take action.
I think it's pretty straightforward what the ordinance is for. We're just vacating the, or giving the utility easement over there by McDonald's. So I'll move in favor of the ordinance number 124 on vacating the portion of the utility easement in block seven of the original platte.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving that ordinance vacating a portion of that utility easement in block seven of the original platte. I'll ask for a roll call vote on that, please. Stacy?
Councilmember Savi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Bellisson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Walde?
Yes. Okay, we have, we'll move right on into the next one. It's a second reading of public hearing of ordinance number 125. And it's an ordinance updating the Morris floodplain map. And again, this is the second reading. So I will open that public hearing for that ordinance. And once again, if anybody would like to come and speak to that ordinance, now would be the time for that. Hearing none. I shall close that public hearing. And I'll once again bring it back to the council. If there's any questions or thoughts on the floodplain ordinance, updating our floodplain map ordinance.
I see that we're basically mandated to accept this?
In order to stay in the flood, the National Flood Insurance Program, yes. You have to have a floodplain ordinance. So we were already in the flood insurance program, but we weren't mapped.
So we're, we're in it for city property, is that correct?
No, it's for anyone.
It's for anybody? So did, by this new ordinance, is this going to affect anybody in particularly harsh in their flood insurance? Or include them into the floodplain area?
So most, most everybody in, you can kind of see in the picture on that second page there. Most everybody has already been in the floodplain prior. So we've added a little bit of area by Crystal Lake. But from what I looked on the maps, there wasn't any houses in there. There was one business, but it looked like they may have already been in the floodplain before. And then a few homes that were built out, but they've already had some letter of, some letters of agreements or whatever it is with FEMA and their houses that shows they, they are in the floodplain, but their house, their structure is not. So they've already kind of been taken out of there where they won't have to get flood insurance. So I don't think it would affect anyone new to get.
If it would, would they be notified by, by the, is this the state or the federal that's doing this?
So their mortgage company would make them?
The mortgage company would get notified that the floodplain has changed and then it would be to them, okay. I would just ask you the questions trying to stave off the, somebody coming flying in here after we pass the ordinance and they're, now they gotta have flood insurance for like 300 bucks a month or something. So just, I know that we have to adopt it, but if it... Is there anything that I...
Once, and on that same thing, once adopted, who lets them know of this new? I mean, here's the one thing, if they decide to build on to their home?
So once they start to build, that would trigger something with the building permits? That hey, you're in, you know, this is your area and...
So we wouldn't, as a city, send out anything prior, a one-time deal? Like saying this we had to rectify, or we had to, you know, update our floodplan for FEMA? And we could send them the whole packet, I guess I don't... It's just sometimes better to let people know ahead of time instead of when they come to get a permit, oh, by the way?
Like I said, there wasn't much that would, we could send those, the parcels that we feel are, have been added, like by the lake over there. The rest of them have been in it prior because it was out of city limits.
Nothing will change for them with this new?
No, right.
And there's just certain uses that are allowed in a floodplain, too, correct?
Yeah, well, and if you build, you have to build high enough
Right.
to where your structure doesn't sit below a certain grade.
Okay. Yeah, I see that. If they were to improve their building or home more than 50% of the market value, they would have to comply with the requirements of the floodplain ordinance. Okay. Any other discussion on adopting the ordinance updating the floodplain? It's pretty extensive really when you look at all the language in here.
I guess my question, maybe if you decided not to, that meant that anybody in the floodplain, because we didn't adopt it, would not be eligible for insurance? Is that how we understand it or not?
That we wouldn't be allowed in the flood insurance program.
And they would have to have insurance outside of that program, which would be...
Way more expensive. A lot of what we've done before, like they, when I talked to our representatives from Minnesota, we've mitigated a lot of our issues with building because we have a shoreline ordinance. So they said a lot of, a lot of where we see some of those houses built over by there are not, have been built up and not in the floodplain because of that.
And affects you more with the financing or to do any financing through any financial institution? Will not borrow money unless you have the flood insurance if it's in this property?
And again, I think the main driver of this is the auditors updating their utilities, correct?
I, this one, no. This one, this one has been, probably have been worked on for years and years trying to update the floodplain maps.
Separate from what we're talking about here, do we?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that was a smaller area. Okay.
I will move approval of the second reading on ordinance number 125, updating the Morse floodplain map.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading, updating ordinance number 125, the Morse floodplain map. With motion and a second, we'll have roll call vote on that ordinance, please.
Councilmember Bellisson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Savi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Mayor Walde?
Yes.
Just one quick question. Is our, because I can't see on the, is our airport in area in this floodplain whatsoever? Okay.
Okay. We shall move on to reading and approval of our July 9th regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meetings from July 9th.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve our July 9th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we have the July 9th condensed version of the minutes for the paper.
I'll move the, move the condensed version of the July...
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the July 9th condensed version of the meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along, we have our consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, application for temporary on-sale liquor license for the American Legion, and an application for temporary on-sale liquor license for the Morse Eagles. I guess I can move approval of those items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will bring it back to the council for any discussion.
Line item 16 for a $101 fence permit refund.
We decided to not do fences. They were never, they were never permitted before. We just gave kind of stipulations of what, what's required when building a fence. So when the new building inspector came on, he took that kind of as a zoning type of thing. And he does, he does that with us too. So we decided we weren't going to do fence permits like we had always never done in the past. So we, the one person that we had taken a fee from, we gave it back.
There's actually two of them in here.
Oh.
Line item 61 also for the same, I just...
Yep.
Thank you.
That's been updated in the website with the, I mean, that's not...
I don't think it's, it was never listed as a specific fee.
Okay.
I assume the two temporary on sale for the fair?
Yes.
Ones for the favor and ones for the...
Mayor, you need a motion on this?
Uh, we already had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all?
We already had a motion and a second. So if there's no further discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda, I guess we can just do a voice vote on that. All those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have petitions, requests, and communications. This is a moving allowance follow-up. At our last meeting, you'll recall, we had some discuss, there was some brief discussion on the $5,000 moving allowance that was in City Manager Shrupp's contract. We had, like I said, a brief discussion on it. Myself, Mayor Waller's provided the council with some thoughts on where we're at with this as far as, I guess, when you consider all the different entities that we have within our employ, the city of Morse, the law, the county law enforcement and Morse Fire Department. I'm not going to read that for the members of the viewing audience, but in addition to that, I think there was some communications from Patrick Melvin. He is the gentleman that worked with us and from DDA, David Drone and Associates, to help draft City Manager Shrupp's contact, contract. And he provided some thoughts as well. So I guess what I'd like to do is just throw it right back to the council here. We could have some discussion on it and then I would encourage us to take some kind of action tonight on it.
So what was the original, since I wasn't here at the last minute meeting? What was the original $5,000 for, just moving expenses?
Mm-hmm. Was it an incentive? Do you get, do you have a help offset?
But did it clearly state Morse, the city of?
A residence of Morse.
When we interviewed some candidates, they simply said that they weren't, if they were hired, were not going to, down they would commute back and forth because they had spouses, had good jobs in the community they were in. And that was an idea to get somebody to move into Morse, to put that in there as a perk for them to live in the city of Morse as a perk or an incentive. That's, that was the intent when we applied it. And originally in it, the six months, we extended that to a year because of the housing issue. And I just felt that it was an incentive to get somebody to move, our new city manager to live in the city of Morse. We don't have anything, I believe, in our terms that says it is required to live in the city of Morse, as your letter here seems to be telling us. So I don't know where you come up with that, but it's an incentive to get him to live here. I don't have a problem with our city manager not living in Morse, but I would prefer they do. But that's an incentive to have them live in our community that they're going to lead and direct. And I'll leave it at that, you know my feelings. That was the meat and potatoes of our discussion at our last meeting. Was what the incentive was to move into the community that you're going to be living. And I understand a lot of the other employees and you can't mandate law enforcement, other city employees that don't live in the city limits. But that was just an incentive to have our city manager live in our community.
I think what I'd like to do at this point, and then I'll bring it back to you, is, I think I would like to provide you, the people that are listening, an opportunity to kind of find out where we were. Because Patrick, this is the email that Patrick Melvin sent all of us, all the members of the council. And he makes six bullet points in here and I think they're pretty important points for us to ponder before we make any decisions in this regard. So I'll just read it for you. Patrick says, "Thanks for the, the call on updating me on what's happening at the city of Morse. A few points I would like to make after reviewing your memo that you plan to present to the city council. Statutory cities are not allowed to require employee residency. I understand that Morse is different in that it is a home rule charter. However, I think this reflects a general attitude on requiring employees to reside within the city. In special cases and only for special positions, cities can require a certain response time. These positions may include police chief, public works director, and positions who are needed to respond to emergencies quickly and therefore must meet a certain response time requirement. Through a specified response time and employees' options for where they live may be limited. This does not apply to most city employees. Please confer with your attorney on this issue. The moving allowance that was to be provided in Shrupp's contact and contract was intended to encourage her to fully commit to the city of Morse by relocating closer to work. As we have seen in the past, city administrators and managers that live closer to work tend to be more long-term employees, which is typically desired of any well-performing city administrator or manager. The specific reference to residents within the city of Morse was perhaps short-sighted at the time because I believe that the city benefits from having its city managers' residents close, which as you point out, could include the city of Alberta. In addition, there are many cities where the available housing is limited. An employee wishing to move to the community but unable to find the type of house and price they can afford should have been taken into consideration. At the time of writing this contract, I was not aware of the available housing supply in Morse. The current labor market is tight and good city administrators and managers are far more difficult than ever to find. We do not seem to have young people choosing local government careers like they have in the past. Retaining a good employee is preferred over having to recruit a new one. The council has the authority to revise the contract and if you would like, it could include agreeing to the moving allowance for relocating closer to work in Alberta with the stipulation that should the manager leave employment within the city in less than three to four years of receiving the moving allowance, a prorated amount has to be repaid to the city." And again, he encourages us to consult our city attorney. That being said, Joe, do you have any comments on this and what it would entail to, if we did decide, if the council did decide to change this?
You know, I think Patrick's email does make a lot of sense, specifically the prorated part. My concern when this initially came out... Um, my concern when this initially came out was if you just release, uh, the funds, uh, you need to make sure there's a public purpose. It's not just amending something in a way that it looks like it's a gift. There has to be consideration for whatever you're doing. So if there's essentially a, an ins- retention incentive built into that, that would appear to be appropriate, you know, as to language for, uh, widening the residency. I don't know if you want to set a certain radius from the city or if you want to say it's in Stevens County, um, I think that would, it's a policy decision for the council.
What exactly does it say in the contract?
I have it here. And it, and in the contract itself, it does not reference six months, like I should have had, but, um, so, uh, the item that's under moving allowance, city shall pay employee five thousand dollars to assist with moving related expenses upon sharing proof of residence within Morse city limits.
Now, I think, in fairness to this council, um, this is the first time that we, as a group, that I can recall, had to hire and pull somebody from within. We've always had the luxury in the past of, I think the last two city managers actually resided here. So for us to go out and actively recruit and bring somebody in, that was kind of unchartered territory for all of us. So, um, you know, that being said, today's economy, the way it is, people travel and move around a lot, and, um, I think we just all kind of need to take a step back and consider really the big picture here. It's not only so much the five thousand dollars we're talking about here, but really when we go to hire, this is for all people going forward, if we have to do this again, uh, for their benefit, because I don't think we want to limit ourselves, uh, on attracting a good person just because they can't find a house in our town that is affordable and suitable. It's my thoughts. I'll bring it back to the council.
Uh, I guess, uh, as far as I mentioned last time, what's in the contract, is in the contract, that's, uh, I'm not going to say anything else. I think if, if we want to do something about it or, or if we want to change it, then somebody can bring forth, uh, a motion and we can vote on it. We'll, council member, trails would like to speak to it before somebody would bring that up, I guess. I don't know that we need to speak to it too much further.
No, not at all. This is, this is really a tough one. You know, it's, like I said last time, I was, I was really conflicted because I understand what the contract says and I understand the, the nature of what's, what we see on a regular basis as far as just housing in general in town and, and finding things, you know, something, something goes on the market and it's sold within a week or two, you know, it's, it's quick movement, it's, that, that's, that's the positives and the negatives about this, the housing market we have here, right? Um, I, I don't know what kind of language we would necessarily need or require to amend the contract. Um, someone, someone smarter than, than I would have to come up with something like that, but, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
Was there an ask prior to all of this about, you can't find a home in Morse? You know, I know we extended the six months, but was there an ask prior to that, what if I find a home in another community here? Maybe five thousand dollars to.
It wasn't, and honestly, it was because I didn't, I must read over that part because I did not see that it was, uh, into the city.
So, I mean, and here's, here's always the issue when you have a face to something. And we all know that you're very committed, or at least I feel like you're very committed to this job, but we had, there was a contract which said resident of Morse within the city limits. So, other than amending it, um, agree with our attorney that, you know, if we just say, sure, yeah, whatever, it looks more like a perk rather than adding something to it like staying for, you know, how many years or it could be moved into this situation. Um, because I get all the factors that have been mentioned, but on the other hand, the bottom line, we go back to, there was a contract, this is what the contract said, and, um, and that's why I asked about the ask. And like, I know there's stuff that goes on, I know there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on with kids in school and everything and looking at it and, and I wish then we would have talked about that when we extended the six months to say, to look at that a little closer, because then at that point it would have said, well, you know, yea or nay, one way or the other, instead of now bringing it up.
You know, the whole idea, and I guess where I was trying to get the council to try to step back and look at this, when you look at all of the i- the other, uh, entities, like I had mentioned in that memo that I sent to you, city employees, over half our city employees don't live in, within our city limits. Jason Dingman manages our law enforcement. Uh, he has thirteen officers, seven of those officers reside in the city limits, four live outside of the city limits, and two don't even live within the county.
None of them asked for a stipend.
I realize that, but what I'm talking about here is.
I know, and I, that's why I said, I'm not, I, I, the job that's being done is fantastic and the commitment is there, I, that, no one can argue with. But you can't compare people living here and not living here, a little different than it's.
Well, what we're talking about is a residency requirement.
It's not a requirement. It's not a requirement. We're, we offered it to move into town, it's not required, and it doesn't state you have to live in Morse. We offered it if they did, it's not required, Kevin. And that, you keep saying, it is the sheriff of Stevens County, he's, uh, on the county, not the sheriff of Morse, Minnesota. Okay, so that.
What we're talking about is, if she would have decided, if she was able to pu- purchase a house in Morse, it would have been a done deal, right? But she wasn't able to find what she needed, so she moved to Alberta. So, I mean, you can call it what you want, resident of Morse or residency, whatever, it's kind of what it is. But what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get us to think about is, going forward, if we're going to go through, if we have to go through this process again, probably not going to be me sitting in this seat, but it'll be somebody, they're going to have to deal with going out and trying to find a replacement for that city manager. And if our housing in, uh, situation in Morse doesn't improve, good luck, because it's not very easy to find places, we all know, so.
Well, it's not a difficult decision going another time because we would have this as our.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if that would be, like, yeah, no wor- no worries, that would certainly make sense of what happened here.
But you know, the thing is, I was involved in, as you all were, in this hiring process, right? I did not realize she, and I should have probably had a little bit better insight to this than, than any, but I just don't think we put enough thought into how long it was going to take or really taking into consideration the housing crisis we were in. I think this isn't the first time we've talked about housing, um, at this table. We've been talking about the housing situation for a long time. Now, our city manager is living it. She, we invited her here to work, and she struggled to try to find suitable housing for her and her family. So, I think some of that burden has to fall really on us, and that's what I'm trying to say.
Just put it to a vote. If somebody wants to make a motion, make a motion. If not, let's move on.
I think part of the, the problem also was the selling of property before we could move on to buy other properties. So you just closed on selling your other property, I believe, just the first part of July, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, before you bought, you needed to sell your old property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's part of the issue too. It's not just the, you know, it's part of it, and we need to work on more housing, yeah. And we're not locked into stone and whoever's, and I hope we're not burdened with the task of hiring a new city manager while I'm still sitting here, because I think she's doing a good job. I'm happy with the job she's doing, and I hope she re- stays with us, but I think we, we pay her some pretty decent money to be our city manager, and that's part of the wages. And I think every year when they get their wage increase, that all, whatever we do with the rest of our unions is what the city manager gets. So, I think she's being compensated and that was a perk to move into our community. And I, I would say, let's either vote on it or let's put it behind us.
And I agree. I think that's why I think we need to take some action on this, so I guess I will entertain a motion if there's one out there, if not, we'll just move on.
Let's move on to the newsletter.
So, we will move on. No motion made. Next up is ordinances and resolutions, which we have none. We shall move on to the city manager's, uh, reports and recommendations.
Kat, so, um, work session is looking out, uh, we were doing the fifth key of the month. Um, realized it's a little late that that was this month. Um, so I've been working on the budget, um, would like to not hold one this month, but look at, um, September third, um, which is the day after Labor Day to have homework session for the budget. Okay? Is there a different day that would work? Um, everyone, if you do.
Do you still try to do something in September?
I would like to do something in September, you know, if we wanted to, I think last time we had a budget work session, it took a while, so I kind of not want to do it after council, that tenth, or that, yeah. Um, how long are you gone? Unless you wanted to do it that night.
Oh, the whole, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to be there, but.
I'm gone at three.
Well, what about, like, did you want to stay late on the tenth?
I can do that.
Just do it late. Sometimes, you know, that gets longer, but sometimes in it's.
Because we, right.
Yeah. I would, I, I like that, because we're already committed to the day anyway, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Log her on the test?
If we decide on that.
Yeah, so we're going to just help, like, stay late for a work session on the tenth, after the council meeting.
Of September?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, moving on to the planning commission, uh, we had a meeting last week, discussed zoning locations for cannabis, um, kind of talked about that at the last meeting, brought it back to them. They tentatively decided, um, looking at the highway business and central business districts to allow, um, for the selling there. Uh, they'd like to see an ordinance, uh, if that gets completed. Uh, I am working in conjunction with the county. Uh, they're hoping to have their drafts, theirs drafted around Octoberish. Um, they had an administrators meeting last, uh, Thursday with a few administrators from around the area. Um, they said that more information has come out on the cannabis management site, so, um, I'll be heading there, uh, probably next week to kind of look over more of that stuff. Um, they also called a public hearing for a rezone for three different parcels. So those are over, I don't know my east and west yet, but over on that kind of, where the highways cross. So, they were zoned, um, for heavy industrial. Uh, we do have, um, one member in there that, um, there's two houses in one farmland area, so we're, um, going to zone it residential, residential farm, or that's the public hearing is, that'll go, and then, um, at the same time in conjunction with that, um, one of the parcels in there is looking at a conditional use permit, um, which would be for commercial recreational, uh, as they have, as they have a hobby, well, not a hobby farm, but, um, horses, may use those horses for, um, horse therapy. So, that'll be, um, at the same time. So we'll do the public hearings for both those on the same date. Uh, the tree board met and discussed the fall tree planting, so they're still deciding where and of what species it would be planting. Um, they're going to have a table at the community welcome back picnic, and, um, they did discuss the, where to install the Tree City USA signs. Um, Russ said one, one he could most likely place on that new building that'll go out at Comptetera campground. And we got two signs, trying to see if there's another spot for it. Um, I know that they've talked about putting them by our welcome to Morse signs, but the state won't allow that, so that's why we're kind of trying to see where else we could um. Um, circle pines, we had a neighbor connect with us about the cul-de-sac on circle pines. Um, the concern was the trees and the bushes in the middle were overgrown, um, no one in the neighborhood was taking care of it anymore. So in talking with our public works department, um, this was something that they said, the city talked about years ago, and the city wasn't going to maintain it, but the neighborhood was going to. It sounded like the trees were getting, um, in the roadway and making it more difficult for those coming out of their driveways to see. Um, in talking, uh, with public works, it, they talked, um, the last few years about possibly needing to take those trees down because they were getting to be an, um, hindrance. Um, so after looking at it, it was determined the best course action was to take that area out, so the bushes and the trees came down, um, they're going to clean out the middle there and then concrete that middle area and just have the light in the middle. Um, school traffic con- congestion, so the superintendent had asked, um, to have a meeting with myself, the public works, the sheriff's office, and then he brought in a s- few school board members to discuss the traffic con- congestion at the intersection of South Street and Columbia. So he wanted to see if there were any ideas on how to alleviate the congestion before and after school, and then after some of their events, um, Mr. Munson was going to look into the safe routes to school plan to see if, um, if there was traffic there was addressed in that plan. Um, since the plan was pretty new, um, if something like that was addressed, we could always apply for a safe routes to school infrastructure grant to kind of help with some of those ideas that came up in, in that. And then I was tasked with connecting with Bolton and Make to see, um, if they do traffic studies or sign studies and what the cost would be. Um, some of the ideas that were, that, um, were brought forward to us were possibly taking out one of the stop signs and putting in a yield sign. Um, didn't seem very good idea, um, and then taking out any stop signs, um, in any direction, um, we really feel that we need to have some sort of study done to see if that's the best course of action. Um, talked about, um, possibly putting up a light, which would cost probably at least a million dollars, um, to put up there.
Roundabout.
Yeah, right?
Roundabout. Roundabout.
There, yeah, there was, uh, a few discussions on, you know, maybe, maybe having, uh, high school students turn, you know, having that way be just a, a one-way out of that parking lot. Um, so, few ideas, not really a whole lot that, um, seemed like the best option, so, um.
Is the congestion causing accidents? Or just.
Not that the sheriff said no.
Only when it's icy and they don't know how to stop, they're, they're usually on the sherry. So. Is it money for roundabouts in school?
It could possibly be something, if it was tagged in the safe routes to school plan, it could be something that we could maybe get some infrastructure money for. I don't know how much they give on those safe routes to school dollars. Probably not enough for that.
I just don't know how you would, how you would get, you know, the stop signs to keep the stop.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know the bicycles don't stop. They fly right through there.
Yeah.
That's a good question. I don't know, if I was reading that, I'm like, sort of thinking about that.
Well, not only that, then you have the people coming into the, the hospital parking lot park that sit there and they try to make a left turn and all that's going on, and that gets backed up too, um, unless somebody stops heading south on Columbia to let them in, you know, because a lot of the people are maybe located.
And with the expansion at the hospital with coming around that back parking lot instead of coming in on the north side with some of the other stuff that you're using that, that north.
with some of the other stuff that you're using that, that north, or east parking lot, excuse me, off of Columbia, that's probably adding something to it also.
So, check from Bolton and Make is going to get me a price on, on that study. And then just kind of a reminder, our next meeting in August will be on Wednesday, the 14th, because the primary election's on the 13th. After that meeting, we will have, have our charter commission members here and have some discussion on that. I have reached out and heard back from all but one. I left her a message, I emailed them, and then whoever, I didn't hear back from my call. We do have, Tori will be meeting, she won't be here in person. She'll do it over Zoom. And I have one other member who won't be able to be here in person, but they said they would be willing to, if we had a virtual option. So, we'll have that also.
And that's for all of us and the charter commission after a meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have to comply with open meeting for that if they're doing virtual?
Since they're not members of council, I would say no.
But if we have a forum, it's be open meeting if we have more than three of us here.
Right, but we don't have to post that there are different people virtually.
That's what you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Posting, that there's some people posting.
Yep.
That's a wrap on the city manager's newsletter. Any questions for the city manager?
I just have one comment. Resident of circle pines. It would have been nice to, I, I get, the city can do what they want, but just to have let the residents know we're taking. Because those weren't, those were planted. The trees, fine, they were in a way dangerous because of other. I don't live right by the circle, but right at the end, so I don't use it a lot, so I don't, can't see. But I know that the residents put money in for those perennials and they would have dug them out and taken them had known about it. But it was like, one day the trees were gone and then, you know, everything was gone. And, and I, I do question the street light, because it's really not a street light. It's more like a street post. Being in the middle and how that is not going to be...
So, we, we talked about taking it out, but Russ said it gave off more like than he had thought. So...
Can you move it to the end? I mean, like, the, the end between, will be between your property and, because that's property, I mean, between you and Van Hox, the very end? On Columbia, yeah. I don't, I think the city can put a street light anywhere. I think the city can put a street light anywhere if needed, right?
Yeah.
Because it's a pie shape, so, you know, just coming out at the end. I just, I just can see someone backing into that, or it's just a skinny little bolt. It's not even an oversized light.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to board updates. This is, of course, the council's opportunity to communicate any of the latest and greatest happenings on all of the boards you sit on.
Nothing here.
Chamber, of course, we got crazy days and lazy nights coming up. That'll be probably...
31st?
Yep, it's the 31st, yep. Got a lot of good stuff planned, so it should be a fun day. A lot of traffic coming through our community, so...
If you're looking for golf balls or golf clubs, you go down by Bobby Johnson's elevator.
Just chilling?
Just chilling. There you have it, golf balls and golf clubs. That's a golf club. Looking for a nice, cheap pair of balls for emptying the hole, younger people, you can get a nice set for a hundred bucks.
Yes. He did last year, and I talked to him. He's going to do it again this year, but are very inexpensive. If you got somebody that's looking into getting into golfing, be able to get a bag and pretty much all the clothes.
All your culture about a hundred bucks.
And a few sample balls.
Like an outfit all three of my grandsons.
Well, yeah. I've got a big chance for, not spending a lot of money to...
That's what I paid him for. I like to overstep maybe. He's like a buzzing in L.A. He's two...
Early Christmas presents.
Yeah, he's got forty. So, so I, I didn't know people kind of knew that they were stuck down there or whatever. I just thought I'd throw it out if anybody's looking. It's kind of a specialty thing, but, you know, kind of off the beaten path.
Just go out there and buy an early Christmas present.
Yeah. Great for kids, especially, you know, if they don't end up liking it, you know, you'll get your money back out of your club, so...
For sure. Any other thing from any of the respective boards hearing? None? Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none?